Call to order, the City Commission meeting of Tuesday, August 6th, 2019 for the City of Dickinson, but the records show they're missing one Commissioner, Vice President Frederick. First item up is the Order of Business, Mr. Gah.
President Decker, there are no changes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the Order of Business? Now I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion, questions on the Order of Business? All in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Anyone of the Commissioners want to discuss anything on the Consent Agenda? I have one thing that I would like to amend, Mr. Gah, on the Consent Agenda. The wording on D is "approval of MDU contracts for emergency generators." We're not contracting for emergency generators. It's the generation of energy that we're reserving, am I correct?
Yes.
So, we're not purchasing any physical property generator. We're basically, our demand capacity is being reserved and the rate.
Correct.
So, any questions, Commissioners, on that? Or any concerns with anything within the Consent Agenda? Now I'd look for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion, questions on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We do have some timetable presentations this evening, 5:00, 5:10, and 5:20, but we'll move right into the non-time table. And the first item up is our Criminal Code Updates, and that'll be presented by City Prosecutor Winko. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Mr. President, Commissioners. This year, this past legislative session, we found ourselves having to address more substantive code changes. I put together three ordinances for your review. I'll go through them the simplest to the most complex. I put them in separate ordinances because of the complexity and the substantive changes that we're making, probably more for my sanity than yours, just so that we could keep it separate. So, please, if you have any questions as we go through this, I'll highlight the important points and keep the, you know, the details to a minimum. But, starting with the Chapter, Section 33, this is basically in a change to address some ordinances that we have that are duplicative. There are three, as of right now, three ordinances that deal with littering in the city limits. And so, this one is to set it apart from the others to make it very clear that this fine is associated and mirrors the Sentry Code fine. So, this is just a very simple update to address that particular issue. So, that's the only change that we're making to Section 33. Now, as we move forward, we'll just briefly discuss the changes that we're making to Section 25. That deals specifically related to offenses and criminal violations. This past legislative session, the Legislature made the decision that they were going to separate out domestic violence and make it its own separate code or violation of the Sentry Code. As of prior to August 1, our city code mirrored the Sentry Code and allowed that simple assault was included and domestic violence was included under that umbrella of simple assault. Now, based on the legislative changes, domestic violence is its own separate criminal violation. So, these changes, and you'll see as what we've redlined here, this language mirrors the Sentry Code. So, as of the second reading, our city code will have its own separate domestic violence provision. So, in the event that an offender is charged with simple assault, domestic violence, they will now be charged under domestic violence. The other major change that we're seeing with this legislative change is now that these types of offenses, specifically domestic violence, have to be prosecuted in District Court. What was happening before is the attorney would get appointed generally, and then that attorney would transfer the case to District Court to get a jury trial. And then, a resolution is reached in District Court, and then it's remanded back, so the fees would be assessed in City Court. What is now going to happen through some work with our office, the Clerk's Office, Stark County Sheriff's Department, the PD, and the Stark County Clerk's Office and the State's Attorney's Office, we have agreed that the City will, and my office, will continue to prosecute these cases. And so, what that means is now when the Dickinson Police Department enters a violation, these will automatically get entered into District Court. At the end result will mean more court appearances for myself in District Court, because normally Judge Kiel would handle bond appearances and things like that. That's going to change, and so, I will find myself in District Court a lot more because of this change. But substantively, it's not going to change the way that we prosecute these types of cases. We will just be dealing with District Court personnel as opposed to attorney, excuse me, Judge Kiel here in City Court. The other thing that we just wanted to point out, because it's been a little bit of confusion, is the Disorderly Conduct Statute with regard to fireworks. What had happened is a couple of years ago, I believe, the Commission made the choice to include the discharging of firearms into the Disorderly Conduct section of the Code. Because it's done that, there was some confusion with Judge Kiel about the fine that could be imposed, because it's still considered to be an infraction, and under state law, an infraction can assess a maximum fine of $1,000. So, what we've done to alleviate the confusion with the PD and the Clerk's Office is we have separated this out, so it is its own violation. So, it's no longer going to fall under the Disorderly Conduct subsection of the Code. It's its own separate violation, which would have its own separate fee. So, now when someone is cited, they can simply pay the fine associated with that, and then the clerk would take that fine and assess it accordingly. That still doesn't, in the event that it's a significant violation and there's property damage or something of that nature, we can still charge out additional offenses if something is necessary where it's criminal mischief or something like that, or reckless endangerment if it's something super severe. The other major change that we're going to see is the how we prosecute marijuana laws. Before, as of October, well, excuse me, prior to August 1, we handled all of the possession of marijuana paraphernalia cases and all of the possession of marijuana under 14 ounces or less, 14 grams or less, excuse me. The law has significantly changed. Now, we are decriminalizing marijuana. So, what will happen is if you are under the age of 21, you can be charged with ingestion. If you're over the age of 21, there's no law now in the Code or in Sentry Code that provides for a penalty for that. Where we're going to see the most significant changes is with the possession charge. And the Legislature has made significant amendments, so that what will happen is they've decriminalized it, meaning it's no longer, it's a Class B misdemeanor, but now it's an infraction. And they've essentially put it in a hierarchy, so that it's dependent upon the weight of the substance. So, before, if you could possess 14.175 grams of marijuana, and that would be considered a misdemeanor. Now, if you have a very small amount, it's an infraction. If you have a little bit more than that, it's a misdemeanor. And surprisingly enough, only if you have 500 grams or more of marijuana will you get into District Court on a Class A misdemeanor. 500 grams of marijuana equates to 16 ounces, which is a pound. So, it's a significant volume that you have to have in order to get up into District Court. So, what that means for us, we're still going to see the possession charges that we see. We're still going to see the, those types of charges. What we're going to see an increase of are those larger cases that were up in Stark County that had over that 14.75 gram limit. So, anything up into 500 grams is going to be dealt with in our court. So, that will be an adjustment for us. I think there's also going to be some adjustments with the PD and how we analyze evidence and what gets sent to the State Crime Lab, because now we're talking weights and things like that. So, it's going to be a little bit more of a change for the PD. But, those are the major changes with regard to that. So, we will all work through those as they come along, and then, of course, some of the other changes that are still identified in Section 25, those are, again, the littering offenses, and then we've cleaned up some of the language regarding an infraction and when it becomes a misdemeanor and things like that. So, does anybody have any questions on the marijuana or any of that associated with these code updates?
Any questions, Commissioner?
Okay. All right, moving on then, the last one I'll address is Section 23. This one talks about motor vehicles and traffic. The first part is just some minor code changes with regard to immediate notice of an accident, and again, that garbage littering statutes that we're trying to clean up. The substantive change with regard to this section deals with the DUI laws. And I must say, I have to applaud the Dickinson Police Department, because since 2017, after the Birchfield decision came out, the DUI laws in the state of North Dakota have been a colossal mess, and I'm going to be bluntly honest when I say that, because the Legislature has tried to figure it out. The Supreme Court has issued some opinions that we're all kind of still scratching our head a little bit about. So, we've all tried to figure it out, and the Dickinson PD has been very receptive to listening to us and working with us to try to get this figured out, and they're the ones on the ground, on the boots on the ground, dealing with these individuals and trying to get this stuff worked out, and they've handled it very well. So, I have to give them credit where credit is due on that. Yesterday, I was in Bismarck. I attended a training with the Dickinson Police Department. Captain Ciani and three other law enforcement officers went to discuss how we're going to implement new laws and how we're going to treat these new DUI laws. So, the training was very useful. It was very helpful. So, now we have a more clear-cut direction on where we're going to go with the DUI enforcement. And so, major changes substantively, you know, obviously now they'll be able to seal DUI records, where before we couldn't do that. So, changes of that nature, and then, just so the Commission is aware, my office, in conjunction with the Stark County State's Attorney's Office, will be holding trainings for the Dickinson Police Department, as well as Stark County Sheriff's Department, to make sure that both agencies are up to speed on these new laws, so that we can operate as a cohesive unit, so that everybody's on board and everybody's handling this appropriately. I do anticipate, based on the way the Legislature wrote the statute, that we will see some similar contests from defense attorneys and the defense bar, but that's our job to deal with those. So, any questions on Chapter 23 with regard to those changes?
Any questions, Commissioners, for Mrs. Winko? This is three different ordinances, so we'll have to pass each one individually. There are no questions or comments for Mrs. Winko, and we will start then with 23, Chapter 23, which would be, I think, our next ordinance is 1679, am I correct?
Yes.
1679. So, then, 23 will be 1679, 25 will be 1680, and let me make sure I don't miss, 33. Our Section 33 then will be 1681, dealing with that, so. Any questions, comments on these three ordinances? Now I'd look for a motion on the first ordinance change to Chapter 23, which will be ordinance 1679.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for staff on 1679? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. On Section 25, which will be ordinance 1680, are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve 1680?
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions on 1680? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. On Section 33, ordinance 1681, any questions? Now I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions on 1681? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, time, wait, some more time, so we'll be moving into... We have the preliminary budget statement is next up, and we will have Deputy City Administrator Carlson presenting.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. In your packet, you received a letter that will be given to the county for state statutes that we have to have it in before August 9. And what it states is that we are hereby asking for our property tax levies request, and we are staying with the same dollar amount that we budgeted for last year, which is And with that, with our City General Fund, we also include the airport and the library each at four mils, and so that totals up to that $5,724,000. With this, the requirement is that we do have to state, to meet compliance, we have to state when our public hearing will be. And in the letter, it states that Tuesday, September 17, 2019, will be for the first reading and public hearing of the 2020 budget, and then Tuesday, October 1, 2019, will be the second reading and final passage. So, that is all included to be in compliance with that. And upon that, I need your approval, consideration to approve.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Carlson?
I think we need to mention that the library's four mils and the airport four mils each equal $476,000 apiece. So, the City's General Fund is actually a million dollars less than the $5,724.
And that's correct. Four mils, because of our taxable estimated value, is lower. Usually, it's around $500,000 that four mils will get, both airport and library, but because of that, we give them four mils, and then we take the basis of what it is of the dollar amount.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mrs. Carlson on the preliminary budget statement? As she stated, we will have two public hearings, the 17th, and... Pull it up here, make sure, look at the dates right.
September 17.
Yep, September 17, and... My computer is malfunctioning, so...
Yep, September 17 is the first reading and public hearing, and then October 1 will be the second reading and final passage of our 2020 budget.
All right, thank you.
This is just asking for the allocation of mils.
And, Ms. Carlson, did you want to say something about another budget meeting? Did we need to discuss that?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Administrator Gah. We do have to finalize our budget, so that on the first reading, we actually have the full things. I'm asking Commission if they would look at their calendars for either August 14, which is a Wednesday, or August 28, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We figure two hours would be the most we would have, and this would just finalize all the 2020 budget.
What were the dates again, Mrs. Carlson?
Eight, August 14 or August 28. And that will be Executive Team and the Commissioners.
28th would be better for me.
Right now, I'm fine with either date, so...
28th.
28th, Ms. Walla? Okay, we're going with 28th.
Appreciate that. I will get the agenda out, and it will be publicized.
Okay, thank you.
8:00 a.m. to 10:00.
Okay, any other questions for Mrs. Carlson? Now I'd look for a motion on the preliminary budget statement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion, comments for Mrs. Carlson or staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up, City Administrator Gah, you will be handling the RFP for the, with the Realtors?
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. At the last Commission meeting, we discussed property we own at 805 Simms Street. We had looked at accepting some proposals for bids. We didn't receive any, so the instruction at that meeting was to solicit proposals from Realtors to list it. We did so, had good interest, four individual Realtors submitted proposals. You'll see those attached, a little bit of varying degree. A couple of them, I think, are a little more consistent with what you're hoping for as far as a sales return. Under Code, we can do that. We need to do so by a resolution, and this is, we're hiring a Realtor, our representative. Any Realtor representing a seller or an individual seller can come. This is basically a non-exclusive agreement, so it can, it does qualify to be on the list serve and open to the market. So, again, you have four proposals, and we just leave it open to you. There were a couple of them within your avenue, I think, a little bit better.
Mr. Gah, does staff have a recommendation for us?
Either of the two proposals that, from, either were two Realtors from Infinity, they're expecting a price over $200,000. One of their list prices was 215, one was 225. I felt that probably the 215 was a little more realistic, and it is 1% lower on the Commission. Those being the two most appealing, I would think that'd be the best of the two.
Commissioners, any other questions for, for Mr. Gah on this, these proposals?
Mr. President, I would just like to note, I think it's great to see that the Realtors see some value in that property, and we had discussions before about it. It is a very unique and beautiful home. It has been through quite a bit and has a lot of history to it. However, I do think the optimism in their listing price shows that we have a potential for recouping some of that money, which we've committed to the Community Foundation for Friendship Heart. So, I think, I think either Realtor would be great, and I would accept Mr. Gah's recommendation for 2015.
Any opposition, Commissioners, to the proposal from Mr. Kleinwakker? I guess then, we will go with Mr. Kleinwakker's proposal, Mr. Gah, and the resolution number... Bin stock?
23.
23. So, this resolution, 23-2019?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve 23-2019 with Mr. Kleinwakker as listing agent. Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Gah or staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. I don't know, the Infinity reps just walked in, you were, one of your listing agents was just selected to list the house, so... Mr. Gah, you have a couple of reports.
Yes, thank you, President Decker. Just a couple of things, a little bit of an update, really not much news on the Dickinson Hills, the Fairway project. You did approve moving forward with that. If the developer agreed, the developer's looking at it. We haven't got a exact confirmation. Between them, City staff, and the contractors, we're looking at some of the items and reevaluating them to make sure they're the right way to go, and comparing them to some other projects and things like that. I still feel very positive. I think it was just a little higher than what we were expecting, so we're just checking and double-checking, but I anticipate having some discussions with them later this week, and again, positive results. The second thing, just a quick thank you note from the Dunn County Historical Society. Thank you so much for the grant, which enabled us to purchase a storage container for the Dunn County Museum. The ability to move our mowing equipment and other potentially hazardous materials out of our display space is an important step in making the museum and community safer for visitors and residents, as well as freeing up exhibit space for items in our collection. Again, thank you for your assistance. So, this was a Southwest regional grant that they received, so always nice to hear about those.
Well, thank you for those reports, Mr. Gah. Mr. Kubis, you're up next. You have some, a couple of items in engineering?
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The first item is a special improvement district policy, and this would tie into a project-specific special improvement district potentially, and that would be our 2020 Mill and Overlay project. At our preliminary budget hearing earlier this year, we had talked about, one, increasing the budget for those Mill and Overlay projects to catch up our road conditions with the pavement management plan that we had prepared. The other thing in that same regard was some comment on creating a special improvement policy to assess a portion of the concrete improvements on those types of projects, thus stretching our dollars and repairing more streets each year with the Mill and Overlay project. So, it would be staff's intent to develop that policy, and I think we had some good discussion with the Commission at the budget meeting, where we would assess a portion of the curb and gutter, assess all of the sidewalk projects, like we would do now, to the property owners, and then pay for the asphalt portion of the project with city funds, as we do today. All that is allowable by our Code and by North Dakota Sentry Code. So, the process would really be threefold. One, we'd have staff develop the assessment policy for these Mill and Overlay projects. Request that we put out an RFP to select a consultant to design the 2020 Mill and Overlay project, and then down the road, have the Commission create the actual special improvement district with the policy that we've approved and the project that is designed. This is a little bit earlier than we've selected consultants in the past, understanding that with a special assessment process involved with the project, we're going to increase that timeframe, probably 60 days, before we create the improvement district and then have it go out for a protest period of 30 days, so. I guess the action that we're requesting today really is to go out to an RFP to select this consultant, so we can get moving on the, creating the district and putting a price to the project.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis or comments?
Are we going to, if we do the Mill and Overlays, we're gonna, I'm just looking at what they're doing in Fairway right now, and the length of time when there's concrete involved, and the unique challenges to, you know, putting in the corners that are happening now, and... So, these projects basically will all look like what just happened on Fairway, but to include probably all of the sidewalks and gutters.
That was, that was the discussion, and it may be that the Commission, as we go through this, will need to pass a resolution, would be my understanding, to formalize the special assessment policy, and that could be that we assess a percentage of the concrete. We would assess it all at 50% maybe, or 25%. So, we come up with what we feel is a reasonable number to assess to the property owners in the district.
Stretch those dollars a little bit now. I know there's a, there's a lot going on. If you drive down Fairway right now, there's a, and then the weather has not participated with this project this year, so. with this project this year, so it's, it's coming together, so. The direction you're looking for is to go forward with an RFP to select a consultant, right?
Correct. We've talked to some staff, we have three or four staff members that would be on that selection committee, and we'd certainly want to open it up to one or two commissioners on that selection committee, like we've done in the past on other RFPs.
Okay, we can do that. Commissioners, any questions, comments? If not, I'd look for a motion authorizing Mr. Kubis to move forward with the selection.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With a second? Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Go ahead and form that. Mr. Kubis, right now we have a five o'clock timetable, so we'll have to put your State Avenue striping on hold?
Okay.
If we can. And unless, do you have, is it pretty brief?
I think it would be.
Okay, let's go ahead and do it then. We'll get it out of the way.
Okay, so the State Avenue striping project, actually, we're talking from the State Avenue Bridge project that was recently built in 2016, south to Eighth Street, and then Eighth Street East, all the concrete sections of that road were last striped in probably 1986. So the striping is fairly worn on that project, and what we would like to do is to re-stripe that project, it's a four-lane right now, and re-stripe it as a three-lane with a bike lane. In the handout that was included in your packet, if you look at the typical section shown as a minor arterial, you kind of see that there's a sidewalk on each side, but a bike lane within the road section, and then three lanes for traffic. We really feel this will help curb some of the speeding issues we have. If you remember, several years ago, we had just a rash of off-the-road incidences where vehicles speeding down State Avenue would leave the roadway, crash into private property. But narrowing these lanes down a little bit and confining the vehicles to just three lanes instead of four would help to control the rampant speeding down there as well. This dollar amount for this is estimated between 80 and $100,000. This particular project, while it wasn't budgeted for 2019, there is residual funds from our 50% of the 1% from 2019 that weren't expended. So the fund balance does allow for this work to be completed in 20, excuse me, in 2019. We would recommend that State Avenue get this striping. Like I said, it's been over 30 years since that concrete street has been striped. We hope it will last another 30 years, so believe it to be a good investment in the safety of State Avenue.
I would be in support of it, but I do think we need to have a public hearing to hear from the public, because that is a very used road. So I think if we can put that on the docket for our next meeting, as a public hearing, to see if there are any concerns, and I think that is a good idea, putting the bike lane in, and we did have issues. I haven't heard of any crashes lately, so.
No.
They haven't taken our barrier out, so.
Not lately.
That's good, not lately.
And, Mr. President, I think it'd be beneficial to have a report from the police department as well, allowing public input, but again, having some of that perspective from local law enforcement as well.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Okay, we'll move into our five o'clock timetable, and I'll get my computer to work here. Five o'clock is public hearing for the annexation of Country Oaks Estates. This is the consideration to approve resolution, which will now be?
Twenty-four.
So it'll be resolution?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay. Resolution 24 on the annexation of Country Oaks Estates. Mr. Gah?
Thank you President Decker and Commissioners. This is kind of a final housekeeping item. We've had the first and second reading and the passage of it. According to policy, we have to publish it afterwards and give, give the public a little bit more of a notice to comment. We have received no comments, so this resolution would be the final approval to move forward with that annexation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions or comments for Mr. Gah or staff?
And to clarify that they requested annexation.
They did. And this is tidying up on the north side of?
Correct.
The Hope Christian Academy.
Yes.
And this is a public hearing, so if there are no questions or comments from Commissioners, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone of any concerns on the annexation of Country Oaks Estates and our resolution 24, please come forward, state your name, let us hear your concerns on this annexation. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public with any concerns? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns on the annexation of Country Oaks Estates, we have, will need a motion on resolution 24, and there is a crafted motion within your packets. If someone would look at that, make sure that our wording is correct on the motion, so that is in your?
Mr. President, I would move the City Commission to approve resolution number 24-2019. As presented, the proposed annexation request is compliant with the City of Dickinson City Code and comprehensive plan, and as being in the best interest of the general public health, safety, and welfare.
We have a motion to approve 24-2019.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on this resolution? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Gah? Oh, I guess this is actually Mr. Joseph, Josephson. This is a public hearing for the Renaissance Zone Projects. There are two. One is Infinity Real Estate Group, and the other is the American Bank Center, and county planner Steve Josephson will be presenting.
Good evening Commissioners, Steve Josephson, county planner and Renaissance Zone Coordinator for the City of Dickinson. Both of these requests that you have before you went to the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 17th, when they had a public hearing, Planning and Zoning recommend, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. The first one is for Infinity Real Estate. Okay.
I was told there was a clicker here.
Okay, Infinity Real Estate, they're requesting a five-year real estate tax exemption. They intend to renovate a 5,600-square-foot building on Renaissance, Renaissance Zone Block 25. That's on the 1,200 block of West Villard, and Commissioners, when you, when you extended the Renaissance Zone for an extra fi, for another five years, this portion was added in, was added into the Renaissance Zone. This used to be an old laundromat. They are intending to renovate this and have their offices at that, at that location. They're going to do extensive work, both interior and exterior. The cost of the renovations that are Renaissance Zone eligible are two, are over two, about $267,000. The true, the true and full value of the property is $348,000, so this exceeds the 50, the 50% requirement according to the state to qualify as a Renaissance Zone, Zone Project. There are representatives of Infinity Real Estate here today, if you have any questions for them. As stated, both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Josephson or the representatives from Infinity? Hearing none, we'll open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the Renaissance Zone Projects for the Infinity Real Estate Group on 1269 West Villard Street. If you have any concerns over this project, please come forward, state your name. Anyone from the public with any concerns on this project? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns with this Renaissance Zone project for the Infinity Real Estate Group building, Commissioners, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second? Any further discussion or questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Josephson, you have another project?
Yes, President Decker. Commissioners, this is Renaissance Zone Project 00119. This is the American Bank Center Renaissance Zone Project. I know y'all are probably aware of this. This is, they would be, American Bank Center would be building a 48,250-square-foot building on Renaissance Zone Block Two. These are both vacant lots that they had acquired. This is across the street from their current location, and their intent is to move their, is to move their, their corporate headquarters and services into that, into that location. The cost, overall cost of the project is about $13.7 million. The true and full value, assessed value of the property is $169,500. This is an acquisition and brand-new construction project. It does meet the requirements, the state requirements for Renaissance Zone project. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and there are representatives of American Bank Center who are present today in case you have any questions for them, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson or the representatives from American on this project?
Mr. President, I don't have any questions for Mr. Josephson, but I would just like to say it's really wonderful to see businesses utilizing the Renaissance Zone. You know, it's our hope that businesses see this as a way to really invest in their, not only their commercial property, but also in the downtown beautification. And I know our goal is to have three a year, so it's really wonderful to see two amazing businesses investing and really continuing to drive that investment downtown.
And to your words, Commissioner Trustum, just to let you know, there is, there is one that's coming to Planning and Zoning Commission this month, so if that's approved, we'll have met.
Good deal.
But yes, it's, it's good to see renewed interest in this program.
This is a public hearing, so if there are no more questions from Commissioners, I will open up the public hearing. If there is anyone with any concerns on this project, please come forward, state your name, and let the City Commission know your concerns. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any concerns on this project? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns on this Renaissance Zone project, are there any further questions or comments for staff on this project? Now I'd look for a motion on the American Bank Center Renaissance Project. We have a motion to approve the American Bank Center Renaissance Zone Project at 221st Street West.
Second.
With a second? Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move back to, we have a 5:20, we have about six minutes before that, and let's see what we had here. Public Works, Mr. Prowse. We have Solid Waste Manager Prowse. He has an agreement for hauling recycling.
Good morning, or good afternoon, President and Commissioners. Recently, we went out for a request for proposals to transport our recycled materials to Demcon facility in Shakopee, Minnesota where we're hauling it to. Our current contract expires September 30th, 2019, and Demcon was willing to renew at a much higher rate, $700, more than we are currently paying at $2,700. So that's what drove us to go out for a request for proposal. The new contract will be for a term of two years with the option to renew an additional three years. Why is that? So that we stay in line with our contract we have with Demcon. We have two years left with this material recovery facility. If we choose to go to a different location, we can negotiate that contract at that point. And there is a fuel charge that is triggered after fuel reaches $3.15, and that's based on the U.S. Energy Information Administration. We did receive two bids for, for this transportation, one from Tracker Management out of Minnesota at $22.75 per load, and the other from Triple Star Trucking right here out of Dickinson for $26.38 per load. Tracker Management is actually currently hauling our materials as a subcontractor for Demcon. Their driver ended up going out on some medical purposes, so they had to find a contractor to fulfill the terms of our current contract. It's our recommendation, we offer a contract to Tracker Management on a two-year period. Based on 75 loads per year, we're looking at about $170,000, just over, for the year. In our 2019, 20, and going into 2020 budget, we put $150,000 per year, but with the approval of the new recycling trailers, which are in the process of getting designed and built right now, we're hoping that those 75 trips that we're making could drop down to between 60, 65 trips. So we should, we should maintain within our budget constraints of $150,000, even by paying that $22.75 per load.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Prowse on this? I guess with RFP or? Mr. Prowse, I guess I do, if, if, if the other Commissioners don't have a question. Is there any talk of any kind of development for a recycling facility in the state?
Currently at this time, there is no conversation about that. I have talked to like Demcon, they're growing very quickly in the Minnesota area where they're located. He has thrown some ideas around about building a MRF like in the Moorhead area, so that's a potential that could be coming our way. When is to be determined. I do know that the City of Moorhead was looking at some different, or the county where Moorhead's located, and we're looking at some options of building a facility.
That proposed site in Jamestown never happened, the MRF in Jamestown?
The individual Renaissance Recycling out of Jamestown is currently collecting Jamestown's material and processing them. I actually believe some of his materials are going to the same facility we're utilizing, and I did find that out, City of Fargo's contract, they're going through Mincota Recycling. Those materials are actually going to the same facility as well.
Sounds like an opportunity for somebody.
Mm-hmm, I agree. There is nothing in state of North Dakota, which is unfortunate.
It is, or Montana, you're correct, so. Well, are there any questions for Mr. Prowse on this contract? Do you think we need to lock them in? And your recommendation is to go with Tracker?
Our recommendation would be to approve two-year contract with Tracker Management. That will begin October 1st, 2019, and if you do approve it, I will bring a contract for signature on the next commission meeting on the 20th.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Prowse? Now I'd look for a motion to approve that he moves forward with this agreement.
Move to approve contract with Tracker Management.
A motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Looks like we have some eager, eager participants in the crowd. Just wanted to hold you as long as possible. We usually don't get a crowd like this, so it's nice to have a crowd. But it looks like we have a 5:20 timetable, and Heather Davis, you have some comments before we have the presentation?
Hi, my name is Heather Davis. I am the parent of Riley Davis. She is one of the four- She is one of the four kids that were selected to go to Nationals for National History Day. So I would like Mr. Meyer, because he is the teacher at the middle school that kind of headed all this up and got everyone involved, and then he can explain how they got there and all the work that was put in, and maybe have some of the girls even explain their projects, and then they would be able to answer any questions that you have for them.
Good afternoon. My name is Mitch Meyer, and I teach seventh grade geography at Dickinson Middle School. And as she mentioned, I've been working with National History. This is my second year doing this. The first year, though, sending anybody to the national competition. National History Day is a nonprofit organization that's been around for many years, and it's kind of come and gone through Dickinson, to my understanding, over the years, but it's been kind of new to me since I've been teaching here. Like I said, this is my second year now, and so I'm continuing to try to expand it, and this is my first experience with the national competition in Washington, D.C., which is at University of Maryland. And so we spent a few days down there. These students competed, their exhibits are over here, and it was a really great experience and a learning opportunity for all of us, for sure. And just based on the time that we spent there, I hope to continue developing it. Like I said, when we have eager students like this, it's really easy to do that. So that's about all that I have to say, and I'll let them maybe talk a little bit more about their projects and what they did and what they learned while they were there, because I think they learned a lot, so.
Welcome. Somebody's got to step in. You going to tell us a little bit about your project?
Is this on? Okay. So we did ours on Stephen Hawking. Kind of started the project with thinking that his ALS was his tragedy, which is the theme, Triumph in Tragedy for this year. And then we kind of went on to realize that it was his lack of motivation, and he triumphed through that with his ALS.
So we did ours on the Salem Witch Trials, and we thought that the tragedy was that they had like all these innocent people, they thought they were witches, and we thought the triumph was that we can learn from this incident that happened, that just because people are different, we don't have to accuse them or like kill them.
Well, I think any time you can look back at history like you young ladies did and see exactly how we can learn from the past and learn from people like Mr. Hawking's struggles with his disability and how it actually motivated him to become the person he is, and even with the Salem Witch Trials, how it motivated us to become a better nation in the long run. It is a tragedy what happened to those individuals, but it did, it did help, you know, move justice forward in different directions in the United States, seeing that with due process rather than just basically a witch trial. Any other comments, Commissioners?
I have a question. How do you get to Nationals, and how many teams from North Dakota made it?
I'll help them out over here. So how do we get to Nationals is, so there's different ways states can do it, but I chose to start this as a class project that everybody was required to do, and then from there, the top, however many are selected, and then they move on to a regional competition, which last year was held at the Dickinson Museum Center here in town. This year was held at our school, Dickinson Middle School, and then from there, the top, again, several are selected, although they narrow the field down a lot more. And then from there, they go to Bismarck for the state competition, which is held at the Heritage Center. And then from there, there are categories that everybody can choose, so this is the exhibit category that they both did. There's also, you can write a paper, you can do a website, act out a performance, make a documentary. So there's six categories in total, and they take the top two from each category. So the, North Dakota is still kind of new compared to a lot of states doing this. Some have been doing it this whole time and really have a good program in place. We're still kind of new compared to them. But us, and I believe one other school, were represented, representing North Dakota at the national competition, so if that answers your question.
Absolutely. It's pretty impressive that you have the top two exhibit. So congratulations, and thanks for representing Dickinson. You guys did a great job.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. We'll move into item number 10, Public Issues of City Concern, not on the agenda. If there are any issues that are of city concern that we are not aware of, please come forward, state your name, and let the Commission know what your concerns are within the city.
My name is Al Thorsted. I've been here before. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Aaron Prowse for the excellent job he's doing with the recycling. I'm not going to cause any more waves about that. People actually thought that's why I came here. The reason I came here is I'm going to suggest, you know, you folks are working on a civic center. I know it's going to be down the road, and I don't know why part of the conversation hasn't been about building a dome over the stadium. Boy, tell you what, you could save a lot of money, you could save a lot of workforce. I even made a suggestion, you could call like Rough Rider Convention Civic Workforce Center. There's a lot of people that probably would contribute. Just think of all the expenses you'd save. There's a huge parking lot, there's a lot of available land at the college. I know that the mayor had a conversation with the president. I don't know why the state doesn't get involved. I think it's time to bring oil back into...
That's a whole nother thing.
It's time to bring...
Getting the state involved.
Right. It's time to bring back oil, and I bet you there'd be a lot of oil companies that would like to get involved in a workforce.
We are considering all options, Mr. Thorsted, and I appreciate...
I just didn't see anything in the paper about it, but I think it would be an excellent investment for the city. And I know it's, you know, it's already planned, and your thoughts, I'm sure everybody would love to have a civic center. It's a cost. I think people should get involved. The city's not involved as much as it should. I think it's time the oil came back to Dickinson. I think a lot more people, a lot more organizations would be involved, and thank you for the time.
Yep, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Thorsted. We are considering all options, and we just met prior to this with the consulting group that will be looking at our city to see, and give us recommendations on an event center. So anyone else from the public that has any concerns dealing with the City of Dickinson, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns. Anyone from the public?
Hi, my name is Freddie, and I just want to give you guys a big thank you for all of your guys' hard work, especially the Dickinson Police Department and Stark County and North Dakota Highway Patrol. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Well, we will pass those sentiments on.
Thanks for coming to our meeting.
Everybody's got to have their priorities, so, you know. If I had bowling, I'd probably want to be there, too. Anyone else from the public? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one else from the public has any concerns dealing with the city, we'll close the public issues. Commissioners, we have one thing in our executive session in the commission, but prior to going into that, Commissioners, do you have anything you wish to discuss with the public or that was not on the agenda? Seeing there are no issues the commission wants to speak with, we will go into executive session under North Dakota Century Code 44-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2. I'd look for a motion to go to executive.
So move.
Have a motion to go to executive with a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move to executive for contract. We're back in regular session, City Commission session. We have given guidance to city staff to continue negotiations on a select piece of property, and they will continue forward and keep the City Commission informed to those negotiations. Anything else, Commissioners? Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.